You're the one I'm waiting for.
Good morning, Jeff, Bill, and John. I see you're up on screen.
Yeah, while we're waiting, you know, I thought maybe it might be appropriate for me to introduce John Petcash, who is actually helping us as a CIO as a service from ITech out of Buff State. He's working with Scott Irmer, who again is kind of the broad shoulders in our I T E R P system. But, you know, our goal here is to work and leverage John's expertise. He was a former CIO at Broome Community College. He's done many implementations of platforms. So, you know, we're excited to have John join us and support us and guide us as we're trying to figure out how best to transition to a more stable platform.
Thank you. Welcome.
Which other?
Okay, perfect.
There he is.
Perfect.
Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning. Sorry to hold everybody up.
No, it's fine. Thank you. Welcome to the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees meeting Thursday, June 30th, 2022, at SUNY Erie North Campus, 6205 Main Street, Williamsville, New York. I will start the meeting today by calling Row in the absence of our Secretary, Carrie Phillips. Melody Baker. Excused. Lynn Linehan.
Present.
Amanda Lo.
Here.
Candace Morrison.
Here.
Carrie Phillips. Excused. Jeff Stone.
Here.
Denise Wilson, here. And Marcel.
Here.
I was gonna go at your last name.
Thank you for doing that, by the way.
Soares Piano.
Yep.
Student trustee, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to call this meeting to order. Just for announcements, we will work through the agenda, but we will go into executive session at 10:30. So if you have, if you are asked to come up and speak, just be mindful of the time that you give your explanation or presentation. We have one item on the consent agenda. That is the Board of Trustees minutes of May 26, 2022. May I have a motion?
To move.
Thank you. And there's a, is there a second?
A second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. Care. For the next item, we have items received outside committee meetings. The reason why we have these outside of committee meetings is because the Curriculum, Student Success, and Diversity Committee did not meet, which these items would normally go through. So at this time, I will ask Dr. Adyam Sagai, our Vice, our Provost, to kind of go through these items. And I'm told she has a team of people that may need to present as well. So when you do, if you are asked to come up, can you please just come to the table where the mics are? Thank you so much.
Good morning, Chairwoman. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have Katie Marshall, who's going to be talking about our driver ed agreement.
Good morning, everybody. So this agreement refers to our AAA agreement for our driver ed program. It's an addendum to the contract that we have, and it allows us to offer our curriculum remotely. And so we'd like to continue to do that. And AAA provides remote curriculum for us to do so.
Are there any questions from trustees? Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice even size.
This is so easy. Next.
Thank you, Katie. And I would like to present our faculty, Carl Stok, to talk a little bit about our social services internship.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So what was presented is the most recent internship agreement with the Department of Social Services for Erie County, because the human services program needs that internship as the piece to have the students graduate. And it presents a lot of opportunities. And as to Dr. Balkin's plans and strategies, this is really good because a lot, a lot, a lot of my students end up getting hired right out of the internship, right into different fields and human services. So they, the county typically, they start to do more like a one-year contract. The typical ones are three, but this is just the latest system of that.
So you said this is just a one-year agreement, though? So why, why are they migrating to a one-year?
You know, that's kind of, you know, that's on them.
But we're good.
Our typical ones are three, but, you know, it doesn't matter. I'll just keep kicking them off every time.
Excellent.
I'm hearing everyone tell you congratulations for an award. What did you receive?
Well, I received from the University of Buffalo School of Social Work. I am also a field educator for the MSW program there. So what I'll do is I'll have social work students, master's level students, come work an internship here at the college. And we kind of take a dual approach. So part of their internship is working with the Student Access Center. And the other part is helping me in the classroom. So they get to get a really good experience. And what happened was, and I didn't know about this, but apparently they surveyed all the students who participate in this, and the student shot a really, really nice video for me. I didn't see it till later, but they shot a video explaining how much they learned and what their experience was. And they had the connection with our students here. And, you know, they called me up, told me I won, and had me come on down, and that was it.
Well, congratulations. Thank you so much. Any questions? All right, thank you.
So Chairwoman, I will do the West Her agreement. This is a new partnership, meaning extending our partnership with West Her. This is a certificate, maintaining certificate program. It's a 15-week program that we have. It's called AM. It is something that West Her is supporting in terms of space. It's actually going to be in the North Town. We're very excited about it. West Her, as you know, is also allocating a lot of resources to this effort in terms of marketing. They do have a very focus in doing recruitment, and particularly in the underserved population to really engage them in the auto tech. And so this is fairly stackable generally into the certificate as well as into the degree. So we're very excited about this partnership. We want to grow our auto tech, and so this is being presented to the board.
I think this is great because it further strengthens our partnership with West Her and also serves as a model for the other organizations such as West Her in this community. So absolutely.
Actually, I had the opportunity yesterday to participate in a dealer session that was held at Buffalo Country Club that the NFADA put on. And all the dealers, including Scott Beeler, was there. Fantastic opportunity to meet a lot of people, a lot of representatives, congresspeople, senators were there. But, you know, there is just an amazing opportunity for us to have a significant impact in this space. And what we just really need to do is figure out how best to replicate that model that West Her has kind of led us with and figure out how to, again, embrace many of these dealers into a unified effort. So really excited about the prospects. And, you know, we've got some other opportunities that we're looking at in parallel with respect to how we might leverage third-party space to grow.
Great. And it's about like two miles away from here. We've been to this space, and really they're doing an awesome job. I think the other thing to note about this, in the partnership with them, myself and Eric went to New Hope Education Center on Jefferson and met with that organization to open some opportunity, including this, as well as the city mission. We had an exciting time with them too, as well as to doing some partners. So we did reach out to West Her to help us with that initiative. So we're doing a follow-up meeting where West Her and ourselves will be going to. Those two organizations specifically to recruit for this opportunity. So very exciting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments regarding the West Her certificate? Okay.
Excellent. So Lena Burri, again, I think part of it, I know we're time-sensitive, but I think it's important to bring faculty and our staff that are really initiating projects to be able to present and be recognized at the board.
Absolutely.
So that's part of the intention here.
Absolutely. And thank you. And welcome.
Thank you, and hello, everybody. To make it quick, I'm right now with PI on NSF ATE grant to develop vacuum educational resources. And this is a great resource for industry and for ECC students because it supports some of our classes. And we just need to move funding from one category within the grant to the other category within the grant to count to additional credit hours of time for my co-PI from Normandale Community College, which is our very, very good partner. The net financial impact on ECC is zero because we're just moving money within the grant. So that's pretty much the scoop, unless you guys have more questions.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. This just seems like a procedural ask, and so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations on this grant.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And that's a, it's nothing to sneeze at.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then our dean, Katrina Hill, will be talking about our NFTA agreement.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So what you have before you is the NFTA contract agreement to provide the unlimited bus pass and rail program for our students. We've had this program in place since 2003. Our students take advantage and can travel throughout Western New York utilizing the unlimited pass program. And it's a great opportunity for our students to take internship classes and get to their destinations with their correct paths.
Absolutely. And I think just to add, as we know, access is a key to our students being able to get. And that's one of the things that we see as a barrier. And us having this opportunity for our students, we will even further market it as a way to ensure that we get students enrolled because we're able to give them the opportunity to move around our campuses and engage in our program. So a very important agreement.
Absolutely. The college in the past has done a great job with helping to mitigate the barrier of transportation and access. And so this is one of, just one of the other ways. I know we also have the shuttles in between campuses and things of that nature. So thank you, Katrina. Before you leave, I'm hearing there are some news that that you may have.
Yes, I am retiring as of July 15th. And I am very blessed and fortunate to have received a role with Roswell Comprehensive Cancer Center as the Deputy Chief Academic Officer. So I will be heading up to the chair. Thank you all for just the wonderful opportunity that you have given me over 31 and a half years. I've learned everything from you. And I will be taking that expertise and experience to Roswell, and I feel well-trained.
Well, Katrina, I just want to thank you for your years of service. That is just exciting. And I am very happy for this next chapter in your journey. I want to thank you for all of the support that you have given me while I was on this board of, well, on the Board of Trustees. Just congratulations and very, very well-deserved.
Thank you. And thank you to Dr. Sagai and also to Dr. Balkin and all my colleagues. You guys have been awesome. It's not a phone call that has gone unanswered, so thank you.
Her 6:00 AM emails.
And then lastly, Finney Freeman for One Stop Center.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What you have in front of you is an agreement between the college and the Buffalo and Erie County Workforce Investment Board. This is our 22nd year in this partnership. You'll see that each year we serve a lot of constituents from more than 35 of the codes. We also have funding for our students ranging from $4,000 to $25,000 depending on how they're eligible. So it's been an amazing partnership and I ask for support for this contract. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? This is another great partnership with the Workforce Investment Board and I'm glad that SUNY Erie is a part of it. Thank you.
I also want to thank Denise and Erickson for actually investigating how our college can take even greater advantage of it. And I think over the last several months, the two of you have been working together and it's just promoting so many more opportunities for our potential students. So that's exactly what we need, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you. As of yesterday, we had 28 new students that we're processing for grants, students that were going to have to borrow money to come to this institution and we're just starting. So it's really awesome. I've never had an Eric before who actually is so collaborative, gives me information like all the time. So thank you, Eric and thank you, Dr. Balkin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have six items for board approval. I'll do them separately, so just bear with me, guys. We'll move through fast. Item one, Agreement on AAA Supplemental 2022. May I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry. Sorry, your ayes do count. Any opposed? Thank you. Number two, Agreement ECC Department of Social Service, Social Service Internship. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Second, I'll take Lena's second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right. Number three, Agreement of SUNY Erie West Her AMP Certificate. May I have a motion?
I still move.
Is there a second? Candice, you're on a roll.
I'll second.
We want that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Number, number four, Normandale CC Agreement Amendment, excuse me. May I have a motion?
I have a motion.
So move.
All right, we have a motion from our student trustee. First one, there we go. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Number five, NFT 2022 to 2026 Executive Summary.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Lastly, we have the Agreement of the WOI A SUNY Erie Career Center Grant. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sagai and team. We have two items for board information, the LMHF Financials for May 2022 and the LMHF Financials ECC January through May 2022. For committee briefings, as I stated, we did not meet for curriculum, student success and diversity, but there is a meeting scheduled for July and I'm not sure of the date, but it will be listed in the minutes. For budget audit and human resources, I'll call on Vice Chair Stone, who chairs that committee.
Good morning. Greetings from Turkey Point, Ontario. I'm on vacation. We started not to be there in person, but we can move right along. The LMHF looks positive. You've got a chance to see those on 32 and 34. That plan continues to roll in positive territory, which is a bright spot for us, both year-to-date and current month. As for the budget and audit committee, audit and human resources, we had a robust meeting in May, which led to a very detailed report that I made at the last board meeting on May 26th. And the general points that I made in summarizing the budget were very nicely captured in the minutes, which you can see on page 10, the bullet points that I sort of led the group through as we talked about the budget before voting to submit it to the Erie County Legislature. Since then, we had another robust meeting of the budget and audit and human resources committee on June 16th and we just continue at this point to move the progress, the process along. We have submitted the budget per the Board of Trustees' Resolution of May 26th to the legislature. I think, I recall on President Balkin and former incoming president Ruder to maybe let us know how that was received. We've seen press reports that I think college officials were present when that was submitted. It was passed by the legislature, but not by a unanimous vote. I believe the number was eight to three and I think there was a little pushback on the tuition increase. And beyond that, I would like to just hear the comments from our president in terms of how that was received over at the legislature, what, what comments were given. As far as, I certainly won't reiterate all the points made at the last meeting. Again, they're on page 10 and not all that much has changed. The big uncertainty for me is exactly how much savings we will be able to achieve through the early retirement or early, maybe more accurate to say, early transition program that we have, because not everyone will be going into permanent retiring, retirement who decides to accept this incentive, such as Katrina just mentioned. She'll be moving on to another opportunity and congratulations and thanks, Katrina, for that, for your work over many, really decades with the college. And that may be the story for others to accept this incentive to help the college with its financial situation. It may not mean retiring permanently from the workforce, but rather taking another opportunity. So just want to make that, that little point. And then, as I mentioned, there's, how much will be realized from, from our incentive that will save, to the extent that we realize savings, they will drop directly to the bottom line in the sense that it will reduce the otherwise applicable $9 million infusion from, from our reserve fund that we are currently utilizing to balance the 2022, 2023 budget. That's unsustainable in the long run, even the short and medium run. So we're hoping to eat away at that contribution by savings realized through the incentive program and other measures that we're taking. The other pieces of uncertainty that perhaps Dr. Balkin has an update on, I'm not sure anything has changed on this, but we know that there were two one-time pots of money under the New York State budget. One was a $60 million pot to be distributed to SUNY schools. Remember we mentioning a month ago that that's probably largely heading to the four-year colleges, but we will have to see if any makes its way to us and I just am uncertain if anything's happened in the last 30 days to bring clarity to that and whether we might see some revenue from that pot or the other pot, which is a $53 million allotment set aside under the New York State budget for the hiring of new faculties throughout the SUNY system. And whether we will see any money from that is an uncertainty in my mind. Other than that, we continue to monitor closely exactly who has accepted the county-financed and college-financed incentive program that I've talked about. Dr. Balkin can give the latest numbers on that and I think I'll turn it over to him at this point to address a few of those open questions that I just identified, please.
Thank you, Jeff. So to your first point about us presenting to the legislature, I'll, I'll share that Bill Ruder did a fantastic job basically providing the setting for our current situation and explaining exactly how we got here, what the issues are, the challenges that we face moving forward. And again, I don't think any of it was really new news, but it was, it was really well-framed so that it basically provided the exact context required in order for this budget to be approved. One of the key components that was of concern, obviously, revolved around expected $3 million a year line item for our ERP system overhaul. Several questions came up revolving around why that happened, how do we get into this position? And again, frankly, I think most people were well-aware of the situation. You know, it had been public and had been discussed publicly, but obviously, you know, it's a concern and the concern moving forward is always tied to, you know, how do we ensure we get it right this time coming up? Part of the reason why we have John Petcash and ITech supporting us as well as Bill Grau from CICUS, you know, we, we have all the experts in the state, you know, not just John, Bill Grau, Mike Notarius, but they're bringing in CIOs historically who worked as CIOs at, at other colleges to help us assess our current situation and help define how best to move forward. So again, a lot of great work being done. We're still framing exactly how that's going to be translated. Our challenge is that we still have a tie to colleague, which is the system that we had back in 2017 before we went to Workday. We've migrated many modules to Workday and obviously as we look to potentially migrate to Banner, it becomes even more complicated. And the, the challenge here is in enabling the infrastructure support, the headcount, the resources we need to basically deliver on, on these changes. Trying to maintain three systems is going to be tricky and again, part of the initiative will be assessing whether or not there's outside organizations that can provide help as we, as we look to migrate to the Banner solution. Bill, do you want to have any other comments related to the legislature?
You framed it perfect. I think I was able to provide some context to the history where we found ourself after three years of, you know, the Workday and the hiring and we, I started the process when I came back to reduce the scope of our expenses and Dr. Balkin certainly has accelerated that and without, you know, I made it quite clear, without the federal stimulus money that the college recognized over the past three years, we would not be before that to legislature. That's how dire things were. Just yesterday, all of you provided a cash flow update and I thought back, back to December of 20 and January 21, where we actually went to the county with our hands out because we weren't going to be able to make payroll. So, you know, I started the process, but Dr. Balkin really has accelerated. They really dwelled a little on the past, the whole Workday implementation. That's not the fault of anyone in the room today. That is a decision that was made and we're living with that decision, but I think the corner has turned and we have to react to where we are and, and the board and the president has certainly taken that action. So they certainly respect us. The minority was the three votes, Jeff, that you mentioned, the minority. Joe Durigo was pretty outspoken about the tuition increase and you know, we tried to reflect that over the past four years, we've only had one 3% increase, so an effective rate of 0.75%. We showed him that where we are as far as the state, our tuition rate is right in the middle, all the funds that our students receive from financial state, the Excelsior Scholarship and the competition with the four years because the price differential, price point is not significant anymore with all the federal, state financial aid. So I do want to say that Arda did an amazing, amazing job. She worked together and without her doing all that work, I would not, more than praying, would have been in the position to present that information.
Well, I'd like to thank both of you and Arda for going over there and for presenting our budget and in particular, I think, to addressing very specifically that concern about the tuition increase. We at the Board of Trustees gave that a great deal of thought both last year and this year and I'm glad that you were able to share with the lawmakers the, the history there. We've been quite, quite reluctant to raise tuition and as you, if you boil it down, go 0.75 over the last four years, well below normal raises due to inflation and just general progression costs and expenses. So I felt comfortable voting yes for that and I think certainly the rest of the board did, so I'm glad we're able to be there to provide that context. One question I had, and as, as a reminder to the whole group and everyone involved, we are talking about the ERP situation and problems associated with Workday and every budget audit and human resources committee, this decision we made to have that be a regular recurring item on our agenda, so we never lose sight of exactly what's happening in that area. And to that end, there was a report, I think it was Mike Notarius, David, that was going to present a report within a couple of weeks after we last met her. I'm not sure of the exact timing. He wasn't sure, but it was a good assessment made and Scott was right at the heart of it and see exactly what was working, what wasn't and so forth. And I just wonder if that report has either been forthcoming or soon will be.
So there, there has been an interim report generated by Mike Notarius and his team that talks about our current environment here at ECC. However, it doesn't include the projected budget yet and you know, they're working on that now. One of the former CIOs that I referenced is basically structuring a table that explains, you know, the various categories of expenditure that are going to be required. I'm hoping that we have that by close of business tomorrow, at least rough numbers, because we're going to, back to the legislature next week to talk about our capital requests. So to that point, my expectation is that, that interim report, which was sent to Brian Digman, who is the CIO of SUNY, can be shared with you. Happy to share that with, with, you know, anyone who's interested. We can add it to the minutes if that's appropriate, but again, it's, it's, you know, it's basically highlighting everything that has been shared publicly about our challenges and you know, there's some unique instances where there's opportunities for, for fixes that, again, John Petcash is helping us to identify that tactically are more important than others.
I think we all know our enrollment picture has been well-digested by the community. Our general financial picture has been well-digested by the community, I would say, of those interested. With respect to the ERP system, that has not yet been fully digested and we're starting to get more questions about it and more pushback, more concern. And I just think we all have to stay quite well-apprised of what happened, where we are, what we're trying to do now as a board to make sure that we move forward properly and that we're going to handle ultimately on the cost of this, because you're already hearing people saying, how can you raise tuition? You're spending this money and you don't have these, had these issues with the, with the ERP system, so.
Well, I also want to just comment, you know, briefly that, you know, Scott Ermer has really carried the day for us over the last four months that I've been here and I'm sure probably, you know, prior a couple of years. You know, without his support and his insights, frankly, we'd be in much more dire straits. So, you know, I want to publicly just acknowledge Scott and thank him for all the work that he's doing, especially now in concert with John as we're trying to figure out how best to restructure and realign what we need to do to successfully move forward.
I am very encouraged, David. I would echo that as well. They have all the trustees and Scott has been attending our budget meetings as well and helping us with this. And it's, it's just very impressive, the team that you've brought together and with Scott to address this and that offers some, some, some encouragement thoughts in my mind. So that's probably where we are on that. There are a couple, Chairwoman Wilson, there are a couple of things that we There are a couple, Chairman Wilson, there are a couple of things that we have to vote on out of the committee. It's items one and two, which is the disposal of materials report. I did not see anything on that report and we talked about it at the last budget meeting that was of significance. These are all essentially outdated materials that have been fully depreciated on our books and based on the review of needs and they've been listed as surplus and will be disposed of through the normal county process. That was item one. And then item two is the Workday three-year renewal agreement. And your first reaction, I'm sure, is, oh my, now we've had so many problems with Workday, why are we renewing for three years? But upon closer examination, and I'll certainly, you know, ask others to comment as well, but my assessment of this is we're in the mix here with Workday and there's no getting out in the very short term. It's what, one of actually three systems that we're operating our ERP on, so. But it's very important what we're doing. And this amendment is actually a cost savings measure because there's a calculation of the price we pay based on FTE here under the contract and because of our enrollment declines, we're now in position to actually, in the three-year extension that's being contemplated here after year six, we're in position to save, I think the figure was $451,000. And there's no reason to turn our back on that, obviously, so if we could maybe wish away the past, I think that would be something we might consider, but we're here. And right now, the choice in voting is voting yes on a $451,000 savings and continuing the stable, what's clearly passed with the system or not. So hopefully I've summarized that properly, but David, Bill, Scott, anyone else want to comment before we take up the vote on both that and the disposal of the outdated materials?
Morning. Yes, as Trustee Stone said, the original Workday purchase was a 10-year master agreement. They had price increases fixed for the first five years. Year six was a 2% increase based on the previous base plus the current Consumer Price Index, which is another 4.7%. So we're looking at roughly a 7% increase coming, this coming year. That would be fixed for three years and then we're going to get another 7% increase in years nine and 10. So with our decrease in enrollment, we're able to lower the licensing count and effectively save, as Trustee Stone said, it was $431,000 over the next three years. I know we're engaging with SUNY and ITech about possibly moving off to Banner, another system, but that engagement would last two and a half to three years at a minimum. So technically, if we did not pay, they could shut off access as any other cloud service would happen. So it is a cost that we do have to continue with as our ERP, but we are saving a significant amount of money over the next three years.
And it's been budgeted for?
That's correct.
Thank you, Scott. David or Bill, any other comments from your end? From me?
No, not on my end.
I have a question.
Sure.
So this addendum really is just a price reduction? It doesn't change any other major terms and conditions of the master agreement?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I would recommend that we vote, I guess I'll make a motion unless there's further discussion in following what we did with the earlier list. On item one, the disposal of materials, is there a motion to accept that and approve that? And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the disposal list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then let's take, then as far as the Workday and the three-year renewal, year six through nine on the terms outlined here in our materials, a motion to approve that? I'll move it. Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the outlined, the extension of the Workday three-year, the three-year renewal agreement for Workday at the terms outlined, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so both of those items have been approved. And let's see, the Human Resources Agenda, I'm not sure, Danies, is that a vote of, or David, do you want to vote on that? Page 41, is that the SES position or just the general report?
That's the SES position and we do need to vote on that. I don't know if Dr. Buckland wanted to talk about that position at all, his resolution? He said no.
Danies, you want to pick that?
Yes. Dr. Buckland is coming and the, we have a resolution for the Administration and Finance Special Advisor Position?
Yes, the college is requesting that Mr. Bill Ruder continue to serve at the college but as a special advisor to the president and for the college on a part-time position up to 19 hours a week at the salary range of $125 per hour. And so we do request the Board of Trustees' support.
Thank you. That's the only item on the agenda, so I just need a motion to move that.
Yes, yeah, and I'll second that. We had a good robust discussion of this at the budget meeting a couple of weeks ago and I think we all emerged from that reaffirmed in our thinking about the value that Bill is delivering to the college, not just now, but over the last couple of years, nearly his whole career. To have Bill be able to continue to assist President Volker and the board and really the entire college community with the challenges we're facing now, especially on the financial front, is highly valuable to us and I personally feel this is a very significant yes vote.
Okay, thank you. So you also have, Jeff, five items for board information. Do you want to go through any of those?
Well, let's just, let's see, we should probably just take an official vote on, I think we had a motion in the second?
Oh, we did, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All in favor of the Human Resources Agenda?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
As far as the other items for board information, I think the supplier report is pretty routine. That's available for all of us each month. We take a look at it, we work, look at it at the budget meeting as well. Facilities rentals and waivers, I would say those are trending at the exact, or close to the normal ranges. There are certain waivers that we routinely give, but others that we charge for use of facilities. I didn't see anything unusual there. Budget to actual, that's always helpful, but it gets more helpful as the year goes on, it gets closer to a close because when you have, when you have an August report, you see exactly what's happening vis-à-vis the year before and the budget and so forth. In May or June, you're kind of at the mercy of some timing things where you're not quite sure what's hitting in May last year, but now in June, it's a little bit hard to compare apples to apples. But we get that and we look at it and we look at it at the budget meeting as well and hear a report on it. That, of course, ties to enrollment. Remember that about 80% of our revenue is driven by enrollment. So Dr. Balkin typically reports on that in his report and that's, you know, always something to pay great attention to. The Human Resources transaction report was routine outside of the SES position we just talked about. And the minutes were of their usual very high quality of our last meeting. So I will, I will stop there.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stone. Next, we have the Policy and Governance Committee meeting in absence of Trustee Baker. I'll have Dr. Sagai. We have three items that will come before us for approval and two for board information.
So the two, I'll focus on the two and then Kathy will focus on the third one. The first one is really talking about our grade change and the second is really the grade system. So this is student grade, making sure that the college now, I believe, we had somewhat of a policy and sometimes we confused procedure and policy and so we needed to be very clear at the institution level to ensure that we have a policy that really speaks to the grade change and whose responsibility is that and it lays out nicely as to whose accountable for that, obviously. Our faculty are the, sort of the house of grade, so it's the faculty responsibility to do that, but we wanted to make sure it was very clearly stated. These two policy happened in the work for almost a year and a half, if not more, going through a committee and you have the committee who worked on it, went through the Senate and had a robust discussion there. We find you are able to get it to this point of it and prove it very important for our students' success. The other policy in terms of the system of grade policy, specifically the I was the one that we spent a lot of time talking about, what does that look like when we give an incomplete to student? What is the expectation from the student? What's the expectation from the faculty? Where is that documented and then how is that followed? So I think it's very important that we're clear on the policy. What we're doing now, though, is really assessing to see how many of our students actually receive incomplete and what does that look like? And then what type of support mechanism do we have to ensure that those students are staying on track to make sure that their incomplete is being converted to passing? If not, what does that look like for that student? So I think these two are timely and really important, but we really needed to be consistent and do two policy that are at the college level to make sure that all of us are doing it. But most importantly, our students are very clear as to what this means so that they could hold us accountable. If we're not doing our part, we could also do the same with those, with our students as well.
How do you communicate these types of changes to both faculty and staff?
Excellent question. I think that's an opportunity that we have as a college to really figure this out. We have, now that Trustee Baker is in, is leading this, that is a discussion that we have, including the template of the policy, what does that look like? So we have a great opportunity to really do that. We do have currently, right through the Senate, that this is being communicated, but as a college, as we are looking at our, at our website, for example, is another area that we have an opportunity to really do it differently to make sure that it's clear to students as well as to faculty and staff. Opportunity for us in orientation, as you know, we have to be able to inform our students where our policies relates to their experience, where that is and how do they go about using it and so forth. So I think we have an opportunity both on the student side, but also on the faculty and staff side to make sure that all of us are clear on that. Just to note, like I said, as a college, we've been struggling between procedures and policy. We also have been struggling or challenged by the fact that we have department accreditation like our health sciences, we have a different expectation there, so we have to align our policies and procedure to make sure that we're working in concert with the accreditation body to ensure that our policy as an institution makes sense, but we also need to ensure that the accreditation of those unique programs that we have also that are in line with what we have.
So how is it communicated out to students?
Right. So the catalog is one.
The catalog.
Absolutely, the catalog.
And orientation.
Yeah, absolutely. But I think as well as when we're advising students, we have an opportunity to do that too. So I think there's many ways that we need to really communicate with our students, but I would equally submit that the same thing needs to happen with faculty and staff to ensure that all of us are consistent.
So one thing that, you know, other colleges do is they do generate a faculty handbook and a student handbook and it's something that we've discussed. I broached with Colleen Quinn a couple of times. I think whether it's online or a hard copy, you know, frankly, we need to get to that. You know, other local community colleges do have handbooks and again, it's a great way of ensuring that we don't lose institutional knowledge as, you know, things evolve over time.
So we would like the board to approve for the approval for those two policies.
Okay. I have the planning and assessment policy. This policy was created through a college senate planning and assessment policy task force. It was comprised of faculty, we had FFACC representation, AA ACC representation, librarians counselor and the president appointed Arda Planer to sit on that committee with us, our task force. This policy is a major reduction from the previous policy that was approved in 2021. It was previously a combination of policy and procedure. It was about six pages long. We've reduced it to the three bullet points, basically just keeping us evergreen in a language that is linked directly to our creditors and the assessment plan and procedure will be a supplement to this policy and is being worked on currently by the Middle States Committee.
Just to point out on this, this is one of the things that we, as we had our visit for Middle State, that we struggled as a college because we had put so much information in what we considered to be policy and the question from the visitors was, where do you do this? Right? So if you, as we all know, we write policy, we need to follow it. We can't just write it to be undocumented, so that was one of the challenge. And so in respond to our Middle State that Kathy and team are working on is to indicate and show that this is what we did as a way of taking action to ensure that we're consistent and we have a policy that is very clean in terms of us being able to evidence that to them. So this will support our effort in terms of our response to Middle State that's due in September.
Yes. Okay. Items one through three, as we said, are up for approval. May I have a motion for the grade change policy?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion for the number two, grades and academic standing grading system policy?
So move.
May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion for the planning and assessment policy?
So move.
May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the handbook, we can put that in this committee as a to-do item of the creation of a handbook?
I think, I think it goes both in that curriculum committee as well as policy and both to do that. We have been collecting all the handbooks that we have for our health sciences because a lot of them require that. So I think to Dr. Balkin's point in terms of as an institution, what does that look like as well as by the division, particularly health science? So we are working on that because we have been collecting that, but I think maybe both committees may be involved.
Okay, perfect. I just don't want to lose that because I did not know that we did not have a student handbook.
We do.
We do.
They're just, they're just not to, the vision Dr. Balkin's talking about is holistic, it's an institution. What we have are scattered of policy, procedure and other stuff that are there right now, so that's why we're.
And the danger in that is that some of their front-end documents conflict with what is in the catalog. So we're doing an assessment right now of what exists, what has to exist in those health science or other accredited programs that differs from college policy and then we can put together a comprehensive book for the students.
Okay. Are we asking other colleges to, you know?
Similar colleges to see the.
Their models. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
So it'll, we'll keep track on that at least in the curriculum and student success committee. Perfect. For board information, we have the acceptable use policy as well as the minutes from March 30 of 2022. For strategic planning and absence of Trustee Phillips, we have for board information the minutes of May 10, 2022.
Yeah, Trustee Phillips had asked us to give a rundown also of our Middle States information.
Okay.
Stay here.
Yeah. So in our meeting, we had discussed our Excel's report card. We talked also about. We talked also about, most specifically about our Middle States upcoming report that is due on September 1. And she had asked that I kind of give a brief description of the work that's been going on since Middle States left in November. So throughout the spring semester, we worked with faculty. We had meetings with our opening day and our college day, working towards discussing the assessment process as it stands at the College Now. The task force was created through the college senate and they met at least two times during the last week of classes. So while they were grading, they also had two hour long meetings with the task force to develop that new assessment policy. And we have a robust team of faculty assessment mentors and a new accreditation chair. That's FF ECC appointment. And they have been meeting with me weekly, sometimes multiple times during the week, working through assessment plans for the entire college. So instead of piecemeal, kind of everyone's doing things their way, we're looking at a holistic approach to the college's assessment plan. The warning we are on with Middle States encompasses our academic effectiveness, the assessment of academic effectiveness. And the language that was used by the commission discussed not the fact that we are not assessing the academics in the classroom. It was that the college was not using that to inform their decision making. And so from that, what we learned as we are working through this and looking at all of the great assessment work that our faculty have been doing, that our business office and student services offices are doing, there was no central oversight. And that really is the work of the IRAP office, which is what I am interim AVP for at the moment. And that office was not really functioning as that oversight. So all of these things were kind of going into a void. So what we are doing now is working through, and we did unit reviews with four academic units. And from that process, we've analyzed the value of the questions they were asked during that process, not only to them, but to the college, if that work was really, you know, work that was going to promote the effectiveness of that curriculum and the effectiveness and the learning that the college needs to do about how that unit needs support. And so from that, we've started looking at what happens after it leaves the faculty's hands, right? So how does it filter up to administration? And then how does administration make comprehensive decisions that then filter back down to effectively change the environment or the classroom that needs to, you know, all the stuff that helps promote student learning? And we are going through academic assessment plan, general education assessment plan. Those two are, I would say, about 90% of the way constructed for review by the task force in the next coming weeks. We have two assessment mentors who are working directly. The last two weeks, they've been interviewing our business offices and our student support services to see how their interaction with our assessment process, their unit goal reporting is working and if it's effective, if it's being, how they could see it being used in a better way. And we have someone who will be reaching out. I kind of have to giggle to this because, to you as well, as governance. So she's doing our governance assessment. So she will be talking to the board, she'll be talking to college senate, and she will be looking at how we assess the work that the board and the senate does. So I look at Erica as I say that. So you might be getting contacted. And then a comprehensive institutional effectiveness plan. How does that all come together? And how does the work of that IRAP office effectively advise the president and the SES staff of the needs of the college?
And I think one of the things that's probably immediate tangible, as we recognize, and I know Chairwoman, you have been in many discussions regarding course evaluation at the institution level. For our new board members, we have course evaluation that we do that is associated with rank advancement and evaluation at a lower level. But as we know, a lot of schools have course evaluation that they do every semester to give feedback from students so that we can improve teaching and learning. That is a big piece, a gap that we have at the college. In this process, the team have identified, I know there's been a discussion for a long time, but clearly it is one of the area that we need to, I would argue, immediately. And we were also sort of, not criticized, but pointed by our reviewers when they came to visit our college. Number one, to suggest that we were using paper in terms of evaluating. Number two, the content and the question of the evaluation was really not related, I would argue. And they did point it out to teaching and learning, right? So I think, as we all know, at the end of the day, the classroom is the hub. It's really what we do. And if we're not able to get that feedback from our students about our teaching and learning, we really are, right, there's a huge disconnect. So that's the other piece that I.
That was actually something really nice that came out of the task force's work was that faculty, union representatives, and others were able to discuss their desire to have that course evaluation on a regular basis. They have it at other colleges that they teach at. And they have discussed with the, sorry, union leadership that was at the meeting, that this was something that they would like, that it would help inform the work that they do in the classroom. And so we have, he, the union representatives, that he would reach out to both Buff State and University of Buffalo's union to see the language that is used to effectively make that change in the upcoming, either through an MOU or through a collective bargaining agreement.
So question for you, though. Why does it have to be negotiated? Why can't it just be a policy? Our policy is that every class has a course evaluation.
Right. I think we need to get there, right? Because it is within the contract, absolutely. We, I think.
But again, policies aren't necessarily all within the contract.
Right. But the way the contract is written, and as Adam said, this has been on my list for many, many years. The way this contract, the contract is written, we, faculty can only be evaluated for.
But this isn't evaluating the faculty, it's evaluating the course. And, you know, you could just say, you know, again.
I think the argument was, and, you know, you guys have done much more work in this. I think back then, if I remember correctly, the argument was, is that through evaluating the course, it is by a way evaluating faculty. And there was also fear of punitive measures in, through these evaluations. This is what was told to me. So I think now that Middle States has its eye on it, it could help move the conversation a little further.
But also, it was self-identified within this group, which is composite of generally faculty, right? As we are assessing ourselves, we have to really question, right? So when we think about how or to what extent do we survey our students? We have one survey that is driven by SUNY. Again, I'm talking about at the institution level. I want to be clear, for our accrediting body, we do have to do a survey regularly. So we do do that in order to meet accreditation for those health sciences. But when we think about it as an institution, when do we survey our student? It's through the SUNY and about 400 students.
Yeah, so we did a, SUNY does, I think it's like biannual student opinion survey, which is environmental scan of the college. And what occurred the last time that that survey was released and sent across campus is we had roughly, out of our, you know, approximately 8,000 students, we had 400 responses. And those responses are sent, obviously anonymously, to SUNY and then returned to the college. And the person who was formerly in my position did not explain to the college and to the board that that was a 400 student composite. So it was, there was a lot of negative feedback because 400 students were probably the ones that were maybe a little dissatisfied, right? So it really needs to be a more transparent way in which we are evaluating the work that's done at the college. And really needs to be putting the students first, right? At the end of the day, it is about the students.
Right. And as it relates to, again, SUNY, what, you know, SUNY Erie having and leading that effort to ensure that we are hearing our students and that, right? I think the key here specifically to Middle State and to what we're doing in terms of assessment is that teaching, learning in the classroom, what does that look like? And what does that mean for the college to import, to inform us in terms of program offering, schedule? You know, there's so many pieces to that that I think could help our college move in the right direction and the direction that we're trying to go towards. But I think the work that this team is doing, also in collaboration with the union, because as Kathy mentioned, the union representative is helping us with this effort. So the goal here is really have a robust discussion with all members to make sure that we're putting the student. But we really need this as a college in order for us to improve ourselves. We cannot improve ourselves if we do not get feedback from our students and from our faculty, one, to the student, but two, to also teach our faculty and upscale our faculty and staff. We really need to do that.
Yeah, one of the things that we, we've been working on, so we just submitted our Perkins grant application. And we've changed the process by which we did the Perkins assessment throughout the college. And Perkins grant is for career and technical education. And what we have learned through that process is that all of our faculty are career and technical education providers, right? Our English faculty touch our CTE students, our math faculty touch our CTE students. And so while we were evaluating the metrics of the specific CTE programs, we took the data to the faculty themselves. And they were asking for learning opportunities to improve their classroom engagement for special populations. They did not understand the disparity in completion rates between all of our students who might have special needs or maybe in special populations. And from that, we were able to rethink the way in which we approached the ask from Perkins. Usually it is a very heavily weighted, like 80% in technology and equipment for the classroom. And this time, we broke it into a 40% to 60%. So 40% is for faculty learning. And we have opportunities now to bring universal design for learning, have 30 faculty educated on universal design for learning through a three semester program that will give them a certificate at the end of that program where they can then upscale the rest of our faculty. We also put in for high flex classrooms because a lot of those special populations cannot access our coursework. They might start out at the beginning of the semester, able to come to class every day, and then something happens and then they have to stop out. Our biggest challenge is the stop out of our students. We identified that we have no problem bringing students into the door. That is not our, the root of our issue. The root of our issue is getting the students to, onto their goal. And so through this process of, you know, talking with faculty, looking at the numbers, just discussing what's really going on, what do you need help with? I've had faculty say this is the first time anyone ever asked me that.
So I would just, thank you. Thank you for that. I would just put, for the record, my goal is to have a student evaluation at the end of every semester for their, for every class that we, that they take. I don't, it's done in almost every institution that I am, that I know here, you know, UB, Buff State, DeUville, and I don't, I don't know why SUNY Erie can't be the same.
We reached back out this morning to Adrian, who was the union representative who was going to do that research. So we've asked him to provide that. This committee is also working on strategic planning. We'll have a much more robust conversation about that at our next meeting. But can I, can I make a suggestion? This is probably very rude, but can we put our mission and vision on these? Because I'm going to, I'm going to talk next time I come about the mission statement. And the mission statement is really critical for us and our conversation. I just, I like our vision, but our mission statement's the driving force. So if we could add that to here, because I think we need to, I'm putting it on everything I publish right now.
Okay. We will be consistent with messaging.
Before you leave, you know, I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank Andy Sacco and Adrian Rannick for helping us in this front. Because, you know, quite frankly, you know, one of my biggest concerns is obviously this letter that's due to Middle States on September 1st. And we have to decide, and we should quickly decide whether or not an MOU needs to be in place before that so we can point to that. It's a critical demonstration that we're committed to the level of evaluation that they're expecting. You know, reading through standard five, they don't explicitly say, you know, a course evaluation or a faculty evaluation is required. But they do point to the fact that you should be looking at retention. You should be looking at, you know, all these things that are aligned with whether or not a faculty member is effectively teaching what he needs to teach.
Right.
So, you know, it being that it's a little bit nebulous, it's all the more important that we come to the table together and we figure out how to do this so we don't trip on the Middle States' opportunity here.
Absolutely.
The last thing, Chairwoman, within this committee, we discussed an opportunity, particularly for our new board members, to do training or inform about Middle State. And so we did talk about that, setting a time to really do that and offer that opportunity through Kathy. And we may be able to get Terrence, who is our liaison from the Middle State. So we would like that opportunity to give information to.
No, I think that's a great idea. And I will ask that you work with Kelly and the new trustees to schedule, to schedule that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Technology, I know, Dr. Balkan, you've explained our IT issues a lot during the budget presentation. I don't know if you have anything more to add?
No, I mean, again, I think the primary focus is wrapped around our ERP system and, you know, the opportunity we have to move forward in a much more efficient manner. So I think that's really at the core of what this group is focused on at the moment.
Thank you. Marketing, trustee Lenahan?
Yes, Chairperson Wilson, we did meet, I believe, on the 15th of June. We continued our discussions about the, you know, upgrading our internal and external communications from the college. Also talked about strategies for both digitally and, you know, paid TV strategies for attracting more enrollment in the fall. Mr. Neil Unz was there. We talked about, you know, the enrollment situation. David, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to what we discussed. We'll be meeting again next month. But David, anything you want to add to that?
No. I mean, and I appreciate all the work that trustee Lenahan is bringing forward here. You know, we've got a very structured agenda. We've got, you know, really good action items that we have to address. You know, a lot of this is really making more of what we already have. You know, frankly, we've got a better leverage, all the media that's available to us. And, you know, I think, I think we're getting our arms around exactly how best to do that moving forward.
And this is Jeff. I would just add to make sure to keep on the list, Len, is that notion that we've talked about, about highlighting the success stories among our alumni group. How that's best done, I don't know, whether that's some sort of a, you know, do an annual event and highlight four or five people who've been very successful out of ECC or some kind of social media or, exactly what form it takes is probably best discussed in your committee. But the idea is, boy, there's so many successful people in our community who've come out of this college, and I don't think we talk dearly enough about them. And I think that could help us with enrollment as parents look and students look and say, you know, Scott Gillo's graduate of ECC and look what he's doing. You know, that's the type of thing I'm thinking about.
Yeah, Jeff, that is part of our external marketing agenda. We've got a number of items, you know, student achievement, but certainly alumni successes throughout the community and in the company for that matter. And that is part of our agenda when it comes to externally promoting this goal. So we will be reporting more on that. We, the ball is rolling on that. We're still trying to find out exactly how we're going to do that. And then, as you see, there were, just a minute from the meeting in May, are on the agenda for just recorded permission. And also I want to say that trustee Morrison did join the marketing committee. We appreciate her presence and her ideas and wanted to welcome her to the committee as well.
Thank you, trustee Lenahan. So for the report of the, of the. So for the report of the chair, I'll keep it brief. A lot of my time has been spent with Dr. Balkan and other trustees, just trying to navigate through these very unprecedented times with our budget and financial concerns. I want to take time to thank Erie County Majority Leader Baskins, as well as Erie County Comptroller Hartwick, for their offering of support and assistance through this process as well, as well as many other elected officials, including county executive polling cards. I will say that it is our intent to try to work internally before we go outside for assistance. So we have convened an internal meeting to try to talk about issues and work through some of these concerns that, I guess, leaders in the college may have in order to move us forward. I want to also just take time in my report to thank those who have chosen to make the hard decision and move towards, and accept the retirement incentive, just as Katrina, many like them, many like her have worked decades at the college and, quite frankly, have a lot, possibly a lot more to give. However, understanding our financial crisis, did decide to take the incentive, and so I would like to publicly thank them for their time and their service. And hopefully, when this is all said and done, we can have a formal way to recognize those who have given so much of their life to SUNY Erie, as well as, SUNY Erie, the college, as well as the students. So I just want to just take that time to say thank you. Other than that, I have also under my report, the ad hoc committee report of the nomination committee, and I need to make this public statement. Every two years, there is an election of officers at the September annual meeting of the board. This is an election year, and Trustee Lenahan has agreed to chair the nominations committee for this year's election. Trustee Morrison has agreed to join the committee as well. If anyone else is interested in joining the committee, please contact Trustee Lenahan. It is important to note that any member of the nominations committee cannot self-appoint. Trustee Lenahan will be polling board members to determine their interest in running for one of the positions or for providing nominations for the positions. At the July board meeting, Trustee Lenahan will provide a slate or slates of officers, and a last call for nominations will be asked for at that time. The election of officers will be held at the annual meeting in September for two-year terms for the chair, vice chair, and board secretary. Is there any?
Thank you for this.
No, absolutely. Trustee Lenahan, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, just again, any members of the board who want to serve as a board member or as a board officer, please feel free to contact me, and then myself and Trustee Morrison will meet and put the slate together for the July meeting, just to propose those that are being nominated, and then, of course, we'll vote on that in September. But just anybody, or even if you have an opinion about, you know, other members that would be good officers, I just want to make this totally open and transparent to everyone who's interested in the leadership of the board. I think we have a lot of good people to promote to those positions, but I want to make sure that everybody that's interested in playing a role in this, feel free to do so by simply contacting myself or Trustee Morrison, and we will have a slate of officers ready to propose at the next meeting.
Thank you. I would like to go out of order, because we're running into that ten-thirty time. If we can have the college senate report, that would be great.
Sure. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm Erica Hendra. I'm the college senate vice chair. Colleen Quinn is in the Adirondacks with her children, running around the forest like little fairies. So they're having a blast. I just want to, so our college senate meeting was the first opportunity for us to really talk about the public RPK report, and the bulk of that meeting, almost the entire ninety minutes of that meeting, President Balkan was able to kind of field questions from the college senate, specifically faculty, about what they're finding as inaccuracies in the data in that report. We're finding that most spoke about their own particular departments, that RPK was reporting a certain number of full-time faculty, and their actual full-time faculty is something different. The senators feel very strongly that they're concerned with both internal and external communication, that this RPK report is being used as clarification for changes that we're making, and they're very concerned that as an academic institution, if the data is wrong or doesn't have context, that we're not making maybe the best decisions possible. So there was a lot of discussion. Like I said, it took up ninety minutes. I think we stayed fifteen minutes late to do a little bit of senate discussion. And I think that's the biggest takeaway from that. I mean, it was very, President Balkan was up there for the whole ninety minutes answering questions for the faculty. So I felt like that was the biggest takeaway.
Yeah, I also want to say, you know, they were excellent questions, and, you know, without a doubt, you know, I fully appreciate, and as does, you know, the trustees, the significance of that RPK report. One thing that I did want to drive home, though, was the fact that we're not following the RPK report recommendations to the letter, and, for example, any deactivation or anything that, you know, goes to that, you know, level of engagement with the faculty or impact on the faculty is being assessed uniquely. So again, I think the RPK report suggested that we, you know, keep an eye or deactivate, you know, a significant number of programs. And I think what we have, frankly, is just a great opportunity for our faculty, our department chairs, our department heads, to kind of rally around this great opportunity to focus on how best to grow our enrollment in those programs. And frankly, you know, I think it kind of leads ultimately to a great discussion with the fantastic work that Dr. Nalens is doing in our enrollment services organization to hopefully grow our enrollment activity.
Sure.
So it was a good meeting from my perspective. I mean, frankly, I'm open to anybody coming in whenever and asking whatever question. And again, you know, nothing is going to be perfect, unfortunately, you know, especially recognizing we are somewhat dependent on workday data that hasn't been all that good.
Sure.
But I appreciate it.
Again, I just want to, I think the biggest takeaway from that is that currently, and you're absolutely right, going forward, we may be deviating from what RPK says, but currently, up until the date of the senate meeting, information in the news and then information internally was consistently referencing RPK. And so the faculty members were concerned that, up until that point, that's the only thing that they saw being used as clarification. And so they were, again, very concerned. I can use English as an example. RPK says we have thirty-three full-time faculty. We have twenty-one across three campuses. We're a service department, which means we serve the entire college community. We serve all the other programs. Math saw some discrepancies, communication, social science. We're still getting faculty input. We're still getting departmental input, because, of course, not everybody could attend that senate meeting, but they're sending it both to the office of the provost, and they're sending it to college senate. If they're seeing specifically numerical discrepancies between.
And I think just to clarify, as we indicated during the senate, is to have, is to make sure that we have a way to make sure that we're interpreting the data. I know RPK did offer, and I know the senate and the union leadership was part of the committee, as RPK was going through the data with the college, and suggested that if individuals, the college community really wanted more clarification, or wanted RPK, the staff to really come and present or clarify. So I think that's number one. Number two, we did get, as a result of our meeting during our senate, we did ask faculty and staff to point any of their question to the provost account. We did get three, you know, questions that were asked of us, and we're working with our IRAP team to really talk through that, to make sure that all of us are looking at it in the same data, and our numbers are accurate.
Right.
So we are doing that and making sure that we have clear transparency with our faculty and staff. But also to go back, in all fairness to RPK, they did offer the college an opportunity for them to present to the college, to answer individual questions, so we want to still extend that opportunity for all staff and faculty at the college, to make sure that we're all clear about where the data and what the intent and the context in which they use the data to present their information.
Perhaps it is necessary to have a follow-up meeting with, you know, after questions and concerns are submitted with RPK.
Absolutely.
But thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Jeff. Erica, that was a great summary of a truly excellent college senate meeting. I try to tune in via YouTube to the senate meetings on a regular basis, and I thought, I was very encouraged by what I saw at that last meeting. And you're right, it was about ninety minutes of Dr. Balkan expressing his views, and then faculty members very thoughtfully, in almost all cases, standing up and saying, now, you know, here's our view of this, and here's a question, and just an excellent, excellent dialogue on both sides, and then David would respond. So, you know, sometimes not an easy conversation, obviously, this is tough stuff, but we have to continue to work toward a common understanding of the facts involuntar, so that we're not adrift as we make decisions that are very significant to a lot of people. So I thought that was a big step in that direction, that particular senate meeting, and I would like to commend, obviously, Dr. Balkan for going, for expressing his openness to receive comments in a good spirit, and in particular, the faculty for standing up and not just quietly sitting there when given that opportunity, but standing up and making points, challenging, asking, and listening to what was said. I just was very encouraged by it, and I'd like to commend really all involved at that senate meeting. It was, we need more of that.
Thank you. So at this time, I would like to request a motion to go into executive session. Any, was there a motion? Did I hear? Thank you. We have a motion, and then Lynn, I heard the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, I don't, I don't like phone. But when we come back out of executive session, we will have the president's report and then... we will have the president's report and then-
This is a tough crowd.
You're back.
Okay. Thank you. The board of trustees made a motion to come out of executive session. During executive session, we discussed personnel and contractual issues. There were no actions taken. To go back to the report, I don't know, David, if you have a report you would like to give?
So frankly, I think we touched on everything that is of a priority. Currently, again, we're working with ITech out of Buff State, which is providing us a free CIO as a service in the name of John Pepcash for three months, and he's helping us to basically position ourselves for success moving forward. The other obvious concern here is all the work we're doing to properly enable people to take advantage of the retirement incentive. We also have resource actions that are pending.
Did you say it?
Okay. Thank you. For our trustee report, Marcel.
So I'm still new to the position, so I don't have a huge report. I'm just trying to learn and get all the information I can get so I can better inform all the students that may come with questions to me. And the only question I had was about the infrastructure about the college, but you guys made sure that I got the information.
I think it would be valuable, to your point, to make sure in the public forum, we explain the fact that capital expenditures are separate and distinct from operational expenses and that dollars that are committed for capital projects are dollars that come from the county and are matched by the state, and those dollars cannot spill over into the operational budget. So when people see capital projects going on to maintain our facilities, these facilities are primarily county and state facilities. The county owns the property, the physical land. The state has invested in the SUNY system and the buildings, and they're paying for all the capital that you see happening on campus. So again, I appreciate the concern. People would say, well, if you're in financial straits, why is all this capital building going on? Again, it's to ensure that we're maintaining the facilities in a manner that's appropriate for the county, the state, and the college.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's everything.
Thank you, Marcel.
So could you remind me, please, of your country of origin, your home country? I have a foreign student that I'm working with in our family who's coming to ECC in the fall. I'm just trying to remember where you hail from.
I am Brazilian. I'm from Brazil.
Ah, it's okay. That's perfect because my family member is also from Brazil. I think I may have mentioned the Cebu, on the east coast.
Oh, that's super cool.
You're going to be a perfect contact for Marcomdis. I'll introduce you guys offline.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any old business? Any new business? The schedule of next month's meeting is July 28 at 9:00 a.m. at SUNY Haring North Campus. And although we don't have quorum, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I motion.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Everyone have a great day.
Fourth of July.
Oh, happy Fourth of July, yes.
Have a great long weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.